Roger.
He's not talking again. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Seven PM. City of Manistee Planning Commission, July 6th, 2023 meeting. Please rise for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, please roll call.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Here.
Commissioner Samansky?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder? Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Approval agenda, at this time the Planning Commission can't take action to approve the July 6th, 2023 agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the agenda as written.
Second by Marlene, second by Mick. Any discussion? Or Bob?
Bob.
Bob, sorry. You guys like?
Okay, Roger.
All right, I can see where this is going. Any? Any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest, is there any member of the commission has anything, any conflicts?
Should I say so?
Yeah, go ahead.
The gentleman on Fifth Avenue, I've met before, my friend owns the house next door. So I just want you to know that I have had.
For the 414 Maple Street? Oh, okay.
All right, anybody else? No, all right, move along. Approval of minutes. This time the Planning Commission can approve the June 1st, 2023 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
By Shelley. Discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky? Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Correspondence? Any? None, okay. Presentation or speaker, we have none this month. And we will go to, move to a public hearing on Z 23-03 condo parking in the C3 district. It is 7:03, open, public hearing.
Um, yeah, so we have Z, zoning amendment Z 2303. And I had posed this to you guys at the last Planning Commission meeting. Speaking with the attorney on recent condo reviews, we realized that there was an unforable regulation within the zoning ordinance requiring parking for residential use condominiums when parking is not required for other residential uses in the C3 district. And when someone is changing ownership, um, you can't implement regulation that didn't exist previously. So, uh, that is the reasoning for this amendment. The, we did not receive any written comment, um, and I didn't receive any phone calls or questions, so.
Okay. Any questions by the commissioner? None? Okay, we will move to public comment on this. If there's anyone like to have anything to say on this, please approach the podium. Uh, name and address, and you have up to five minutes. None? Okay. Any other discussion, further discussion on this? None? Okay. Quick one. 7:04, we will close. Move along to public comment on agenda-related items. Anyone in the audience that has any comment on tonight's agendas? Agenda, excuse me. None? Okay. Move along to new business. Z 23 dash, is that an O or a zero, Katie?
Zero.
Zero, okay. Z 23-03 condo parking, C3 district. Um, is there a motion to approve or, uh, turned down?
I motion to approve it.
Okay, Bob, motions to approve, second?
I'll second.
By Pam. Further, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved. Uh, next amendment to parking in C3 district, or C3, excuse me, DDA request. So is there anybody that has anything to say on this? Mr. Miller?
And I can, I can kind of give you a summary of what Mark and I had talked about. So Mark had, um, kind of posed this idea to me, and this is only to give you guys, you know, to kind of canvas the Planning Commission and see if this is something that you guys would be open to. Um, I know that parking, new parking is very limited in downtown without having to, you know, potentially tear it on a building, or, um, we have a little bit of leeway with the, within 200 feet regulation that already exists. But, um, with Mark and I talking about it, you know, downtown is only about five and a half, six blocks. Um, we were just kind of thinking of the ideas of how we could offer up more parking, and Mark had the idea of kind of posing this language to you guys, seeing if it would be something that you're open to as a commission before officially pursuing anything. Um, and then internally in our department, Mike and I were having a conversation about this, and one thing I do want to add to this as well, just kind of another layer, is that, um, with leasing spaces, we may be opening up some doors to if whatever entity decided that they were not going to lease spaces anymore. We don't want to create regulation that's going to open up a door for creating nonconformities. So if there's some way to have them sold, or some other way to permanently tie a parking space to a development, I think this is something that could work. But, um, yeah, we don't want to end up with a, you know, a scenario of a 50-room hotel who's leasing 50 spaces, and then they lose the opportunity to lease those spaces at no fault of their own. Um, you know, we don't want to do that. But ultimately, I think that the idea there, um, is just to provide more options for developers when wanting to do larger developments in the downtown area that would require parking. Because currently, we only have a couple uses that actually require the parking. So that's kind of, um, the thought process behind this. Mark's here if you guys have any additional questions, but really just trying to get a sense of if this is something the commission thinks is a good idea or would be open to.
Well, I know downtown now, most of the people that own the buildings
Mm-hmm.
park on the street instead of parking somewhere else so customers have room to park, and then we allow, you know, dining, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
Outside takes up a lot of spaces. And, and I think if people own a building, they shouldn't park right on the street to give other people opportunity, and that would untie a lot of spaces more if each store has someone parking there.
Well, it is, yes, the workers shouldn't be parking downtown next to their store, you know, any in the proximity of it. That's what the upper parking lots are for.
Right.
They're kind of cutting their own throats.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, and assuming that everyone is following the, the letter of the law and, you know, adhering to like the two-hour parking, on paper, it should be better, but, you know, in the real world, I don't know how, you know, how much.
Do they enforce that two-hour?
Right, yeah, the, I don't know that, so.
It's, it's very, very difficult under the new rules. You can't mark tires and things, you know. You know, the only way you're going to enforce parking is if you have it paid for.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that the city is ready for that at the moment. My suggestion is that we, we not address this until after they finish the, uh, the study on, uh, the streetscape. And they should be looking at parking. Our parking is abysmal, uh, if you come right down to it. Our, there is very few, um, handicapped accessible parking spaces. All of our parking lots, it doesn't matter if you have a, an, a handicap accessible blue stripes in our parking lot because you can't access, or you can't get from the parking lot to the downtown because of the, the steep streets or the, or the stairs. So, you know, there, to me, it, it doesn't make sense to pursue something along parking until we address some of those other issues, and then maybe come up with a, a, a plan to maybe build more parking, or a parking garage, or pay for parking. Any one of those options. But right now, I think adding this, this only adds to already troubled issue.
It's almost unenforceable, it's.
It, you know, just, just my, my thoughts, I, I have a concern that, you know, people are gonna park where it's convenient, you know? Grocery day, they're gonna park in front of the door, and it may take them a while to get back to their car, kind of thing.
I know Frankfurt has the parking lots, and they have a shuttle that will take you from that lot to downtown. So you can park out and still get access to downtown.
If I may address, uh, thank you Chairman. Um, I think that, uh, the, the idea of having these conversations with you early is a, a very sound one. This, there's nothing that's precipitating an urgent need for a decision here. And so I, I think that waiting until the streetscape plan, which has a parking study paid for by the DDA, is probably a very sound thing to do. As we, as Katie and I discussed this, um, uh, as an idea, uh, it was very clear to me after having conversations with the Gateway Project point person about the DDA coming in and doing levels of parking, uh, as part of the project. It didn't pan out, that has changed since we started talking about this. Um, but it, it occurred to me that, that it's very difficult in the current situation with parking, as you pointed out, to actually have a revenue stream that could be captured to pay off the building of, of a parking deck or, or the creation of parking spaces. And the other thing that I wanted to point out for the discussion is that the, um, the, the actual parking space itself has a value, and in talking to the, on the Gateway Project, it's very clear what that value was. Uh, is anywhere between 35,000 and 45,000 a space. And so if you are wanting to create, um, a, now this is a parking deck, but still, if you want to create, um, a parking deck with 100 spaces, which is a legitimate need for our downtown, you would be putting forward about $4 million. And so in order to create the, the, the conditions or to make that possible in a place where you, where you have difficulty charging for parking, a leased space situation may be the, the route to go in order to create additional parking spaces. And so there's nothing right now at the moment precipitating this need again. The Gateway Project is moving forward without the DDA parking, um, spaces. So there will be no public parking spaces in the project, it will be for the project. That is fine, that makes sense when you're talking about $4 million. But in order to create the conditions in the future, this might be something that can alleviate the issue, help create the opportunity. And I think that, uh, some of the points that were raised, uh, you know, about purchasing, leasing, whatever, I think can be worked through and discussed, and this would be a great forum to do it. Um, you know, something like, you know, um, creating a nonconforming use could be addressed because if, if you're talking about an economic development organization like the DDA or Little River Holdings itself, those are longer-term things and you, uh, longer-term entities, you could have a, uh, discussion about, um, requiring that, that be held in perpetuity. Um, you know, I think that's something we can discuss, but as, as Commissioner Samansky pointed out, maybe tonight's not the, the night to really move forward, we should come back in, in December and, and have that discussion, I think that would be appropriate. We'll have more data, uh, on, on that in, in December. I, I hope we have somebody good to talk to over there on that side. Um, so anyhow, that's, uh, that's just what I wanted to point out. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to, since I'm up here.
I'm in agreement with Mick, I think we should postpone any of this, but like Marlene said, and we brought it up at a few meetings already, we have a municipal lot that is grossly underutilized. New curb cuts, new asphalt went in, new, um, driving around, what, what would it take for the city? I don't even have any idea. To seven days a week, two shifts a day, create a few jobs, considerably less than $4 million a year, I would think, to get a shuttle back and forth. And if people could ride it reliably back and forth and not have to worry about where they were gonna park, that would probably be a, a better short-term, possibly long-term solution than a $4 million parking deck.
Commissioner, that is a great idea.
I didn't think of it.
That is a great idea. We've even, um, as I've tried to make some other things happen with some other developments, we even talked about, at least in the summertime, having, um, the opportunity to do, and we don't need to talk about this in the press, but as an idea, but we, it's public, I'll do it anyway. We talked about having, um, water taxis with the same type of
Yeah.
thing. So you would be able to access a parking lot and then water taxi around, uh, in the summertime only, of course.
That'd be a great tourist trap.
That would alleviate some of the parking issues. Now, this is, you know, a, a lot of times, uh, in government, you'll say that, you know, that's a good idea, it's not quite the right time yet. That might not be the right time. But if we have some flexibility on the parking regulations, we may be able to find solutions like that that could actually make our community even better.
I think we had a water taxi at one time on the river before, quite a few years back.
It was a tour boat.
Yeah.
A little tour boat.
The, the, the little one they had running around. Yeah.
Is, is there any way that the DDA can go to the, um, the business owners and ask their employees? I worked in retail for forever. And, and that was just one of the things that we had to do as an employee, you didn't park in front of the store.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm like Marlene, yeah, they do here. Is there any way that the DDA can go to there, or the chamber can go to there and ask them not to? I mean, I'm lucky, I can walk downtown, I don't have to park, but I'm one of the few, you know?
Yeah. And that actually has been done.
Okay.
So the DDA board member, Deanna Marsh, actually undertook a campaign about a year and a half ago, uh, to put out letters and information and try to encourage people to play nice. I think play nice, I think was part of, part of the word for it. Um, stay nice, play nice. Um, but it, I think that that kind of voluntary education piece has, you know, has its place, but it's not always the most effective. And, um, enforcement is needed. Enforcement is needed, it would clear up some of the issues. Um, however, as Commissioner Samansky pointed out, uh, law enforcement does not have the ability to mark tires as considered an illegal search and seizure.
What about just more signage?
We can do that.
I mean, because I would think that a lot of people, you know, probably even residents, they don't know about the two-hour. They don't, they don't
They don't know signage.
Just like her, I, I, you know, I have the leisure of walking, I can walk downtown, but if somebody were to tell me, now, I would be considerate, if I worked down there, I would, I would park elsewhere. But maybe most people just don't know. I mean, more signage would probably help.
Another great idea.
Well, if you go to any big box store, the employees park out, there's always a line in the, in the parking lot that you don't cross. Um, I know it's a little easier on big box stores than downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those places, they'll record the employee's license plates.
Yeah.
Sure, if you see that car, it's there day after day after day.
They have, and they have a long walk into the store to punch you in, or go to the lunchroom, or whatever. So.
My sister works at the mall and they have a shuttle to the store.
And, and I do remember Chief Glass being here saying he just, he doesn't have the personnel to enforce it right now. He's, he's too shorthanded.
I think they're down two.
Yeah, they're down two.
Yeah.
But I still remember parking meters by River Street.
Yep.
Things to have.
Did they take those out in Traverse City? I know that they had them, but I thought
There's tr, there's meters in Traverse.
But now you don't need parking meters anymore because you have an electronic box, the whole street is paid parking, you put the slip in your window.
Those, the meters are still in Traverse, but you can put your credit card on the meter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It depends on the street, too.
Yeah.
But it's gotten a lot less expensive to
Front shift.
Because before, you maintained, you had somebody that had to maintain every parking meter, you had somebody that had to check every parking meter, somebody that had to empty the parking meters and count the money. Now it's all done electronically and, um, easy peasy.
But we need to have a will, uh, to
Right.
to go there. And so I think that will eventually happen, but placing a value on the parking spaces, like $40,000 a space, if we can start having those conversations, that might be helpful.
Do you honestly think that that could happen? That $40,000 a space?
That's what it would cost to build a garage.
No, I know the overall cost, but I don't see too many papers.
I had no idea it was that much.
No, I wouldn't buy one for 40 grand, but.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, that's for a parking deck, so that, that, so a developer coming in needing 250 parking spaces is probably gonna pull out about $10 million to build it.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, but if we can find other ways, uh, to, to help the smaller projects, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
No, I'm just floored it, it's $40,000 for parking.
Yeah, 15 years ago was about 22, doubled.
Two.
Holy cow.
Bob?
Nothing.
And Mick?
Sir.
Pam? Shelley?
Yes, sir.
Marlene? So I guess with that, um, you want to have a motion to table this till a later date?
Yeah, my motion would be to, uh, table this discussion until after the, uh, uh, streetscape and, uh, parking plan is, been presented, uh, by the DDA, or to the DDA, I should say.
And if I heard Mr. Miller, it's December-ish?
December.
Okay. So we could table it until January? January of '24?
Hey Mark, I might, I might table that. You want to give the DDA time to review it, make the recommendations, so I might put it on your February meeting.
February, March?
Yeah, because then you're after the new year, people are back around, it's February. February, March is what I would do.
You want to go to March?
On the work.
March, okay. March '24, all right.
Although just a question, if we wait till March and not February, if they were going to, city needed contractors, any kind of vendor setup? Um, typically that's usually well underway by then.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, like
If they had to have any work done, if the city had to actually contract any work, March might be a little bit late.
They're not gonna break ground until the 15th because you can't put heavy equipment on the streets.
Okay.
And that's where the Frost laws are going.
So you're not gonna be able to do anything anyway, so if you guys review it in March, you can make recommendations, they'll get them before the 15th.
Okay.
And hopefully it wouldn't have any effect on the choice of what they're gonna do with the streetscape, but might help you guys make your decision on what you might want to do with the zoning ordinance.
Yeah. So there's a motion to table this until March of '24, the first Thursday, in March of '24?
Second.
Is there, Shelley, second? Any further discussion? And we have a motion by, was that Mick?
Yep.
Second, Shelley, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Okay, it's put off till, not put off, but table till March of '24. Moving along, preliminary site plan review of 414 Maple Street. Is, uh, there applicant here for this? I shouldn't say applicant, but, um, spokesman?
Yes, we do have Vida here. Um, I have met with him on a couple occasions more recently, he had had these site plans put together, and I thought it might be a good idea for him to come before the Planning Commission. Campus, you guys, see what your initial thoughts are on, um, his proposal, and, you know, what you guys might want to see or, or whatnot. Um, no decisions are being made tonight, so this is just very much preliminary to get a sense of the board.
Kind of a straw poll?
What's that?
Straw poll.
Straw, I'm sorry.
Straw poll.
Straw poll. Okay.
Yoder.
There you go.
Sorry.
It's a generational gift.
We'll get you taught.
I'm sorry, I'm old.
Please come to the podium.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, letting me present this idea. Um, let me just present myself first. Uh, introduce myself. My name is Vida Lerem. Um, I, uh, retired from teaching about five years ago, and my wife and I decided to move to Manistee. Uh, before that, I had been teaching architecture for 20 years, and, um, my specialty is in sustainable building design, um, and with a focus on energy in architecture.
Katie, or Mike, I apologize. Vida and I sat on another commission together, I apologize, I didn't disclose that earlier.
That's okay, thank you, you guys aren't making decisions tonight, so.
Okay. So, uh, also, uh, for about 50 years now, I've maintained a small architectural practice in Norway. I'm licensed architect in Norway, I'm not licensed architect in Michigan. Uh, the, the slide shows on the left side, um, a project would be finished in 2018, it's a large industrial plant with warehouses, offices, manufacturing. And to the right, uh, and a more recent project, uh, 113-room addition to a hotel with six floors and, uh, a conference, uh, facility for 500 people. Downstream, uh, from that, on the river there, you can see another small project that just was finished, um, this month, actually. Uh, it's, has 16 condo units in it. So here is the lot that my wife and I, um, decided to buy when we, uh, decided to move up here. The plan was to build something on it, and that hasn't happened yet, but we're hoping, uh, that something will happen there soon. This is the view from, uh, Maple Street with Fifth Street on the left there. Next. So in the meantime, we worked with our neighbor, uh, to renovate that garage, it has five stalls, and two of those, uh, belong to the property that we're looking at today, the two, to the, two ones to the right on that picture. This is looking, uh, north from Fifth Street. Next. So I'll, um, present to you a, a very preliminary proposal for what we could do on that site. Next. So what we are suggesting is that, uh, we develop a small housing development, um, on this double lot, and to build five townhouses along Maple Street. Uh, the access to, uh, the, uh, houses would be from an existing curb cut on Fifth Street, and there's a shared sort of automobile court in the, uh, asphalt, uh, paved area that gives access to the entire lot. Uh, the preliminary, we're just looking at maybe houses that have, uh, a main floor, upper floor, and a basement, a walkout basement. So the, uh, main floor and the upper floor would have about 15, 1600 square feet, and the walkout basement would have 6, 700 square feet. So architecturally, uh, the project finds inspiration from, uh, a, a design, uh, category we called, um, gabled modern. It's a modern design with gabled shapes. But also, it takes inspiration from houses that are around us here. Um, houses that are maybe modest in scale, um, looking at the proportions of the houses, the shapes of the roofs, the colors, materials, and so forth to blend in with, uh, uh, the building structures in Manistee. Then the focus on energy, we think that this project could achieve net zero energy, which means that the buildings could produce over a typical year enough energy to cover its own needs for energy, for heating, cooling, and all other needs, and perhaps also charging an electric car. The townhouse idea helps with that, because you have shared walls that do not have any heat loss or heat gain, and the gabled roofs helps with providing the surface for solar panels. So the, the, the market segment we're looking at is something between the larger, less affordable houses we find in Manistee, and the sort of entry-level apartments. So in between there is a market segment that we think there is a need for more housing. So here's an example of what we've been looking at. I mean, Manistee has all these wonderful large mansions, but it also have many, many very beautiful, more modest homes, and I think this, this one, I don't know who this belongs to, but this is one I just took a picture of, and it shows some very important architectural elements. It has this sort of a narrow gable to the street, it's two or one, one and a half or two stories tall, has a porch in the front, it's kind of a side piece where sometimes the entrance is, and so we took inspiration from this. So here's a site plan, a schematic site plan, that shows five townhouses with the access then from the east, north is up on that. It shows that garage, the lighter shape at the end of the garage is a, an improvement we did to the pavement, we put in a drain and put some new paving and stuff in there when we renovated the garage. So this project would, the zoning here is R2, and this project would meet almost all requirements within the R2, as far as I can see, the lot coverage, the height of the buildings, the width of the houses, the setbacks, and so forth. But it's five units, and therefore, on two lots, it, that's where it does not meet the zoning requirement. So here's just an example of, of the energy side of things. I did a quick calculation, and there are tools online to do this, shows that each of these could produce maybe twelve to thirteen thousand kilowatt-hours per year in a typical year. That, that magic number there is to the right, that eight, because I have worked with many houses, like the renovation of our house on Cedar Street, we've got down to below eight kilowatt-hours per square foot per year of total energy used, including heating, cooling, everything. So that is, this shows that the solar system on the roof could, in Manistee, with, with existing conditions here, could produce enough energy to make these houses zero energy. These are very preliminary plans, in the middle there you see the main floor, where the car is parked on the east side, there's room for another car behind it, like a tandem. My goal when I do houses, I always think that the main floor should have a, an accessible entry without any stairs, there should be a bathroom that's wheelchair accessible, and in this case, where they're shown a kitchen and a living space where the living space is could, if someone is depending on sitting in a wheelchair, this could be turned into a bedroom, so that you have the ability for one person to live on one floor without having to move because of something happens in a medical sense. Upstairs, there could be three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and then the basement could be sold undeveloped, but could be developed into many different uses, even a small apartment with access from the Maple Street side. So here's a rendering, this is a view from Fifth Street looking towards Maple, so that is that courtyard where the access would be to the houses, there's a balcony or a deck above the carport for, from the master, master bedroom upstairs. So you, you can see the, the gabled design for vaultages on, or solar panels on the roofs. Different color, the color scheme is of course very preliminary, that's something one would need to, to work on a little bit, but I noticed today that it's not very different from what's happening on First Street right now. Next. And that is the view from Maple Street. So what we've done to these simple forms is, first of all, separated them with a space that is about four feet in between the unit, belongs to the unit, but that's where the stair, internal stair is and all the communication inside, so that they stand out as individual units. There's a, there's a porch on the main floor that you would step up to, and that creates, since this is a pretty public street, that level difference creates more of a feeling of privacy, and at the same time, it allows light to come in under the, the porch into that walkout basement. And that is pretty much what I have, and I'm open for questions.
Now, by, by walkout basement, you're actually, it's going to be stared, correct? It's going to, you're going to have a staircase, it's, it's still going to be below ground?
Yes.
Okay, because quite often, the vision, my first vision when I read walkout basement was the back end, and I was trying to figure out how on a flat landscape you're going to create that environment, but it's seeing your plan, I see that it's basically is, you're just going to have a staircase, so that you'll be able to put a bedroom in that. Now, and there will be other natural lighting in that basement as well, along the front? Is that kind of what I heard, where the horses?
There is, yeah, under the porch it would be. This is, this is kind of a, a very typical English solution, and you're right, there would have to be steps down to the basement, and then a few steps up to the porch.
Katie, could you put the floor plan back, please?
The other, if I can, do you have an estimated cost for construction?
Not yet. We don't have that yet, but it's very early, but, but cost is, is associated with, you, there are steps you can take before you actually start looking at the details of cost, right? One thing is the size of the, each unit, and the, how it's compact over three floors, and sharing walls, so it's less exterior walls, things like that. But with the, with the current situation and, and the lack of, you know, the difficulty of finding someone who can build something around here, of course, drives cost up, so it's very difficult to, to say anything. But the idea is that it should be affordable, whatever that means, though, but in the, like I said, in the, in the, in the market segment between the most expensive houses and the entry level.
My, I just did some rough calculations, so I'm assuming you're looking at somewhere between three hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand?
Yeah, well, it should probably not be five hundred, it should be less than that.
Okay.
They'll be for sale, not for rent?
Yes, that's the idea.
Yes.
Can you put this one up on the computer? I've met you before, and seen before Denise Lakesley, when withdrawing, in the past, for what you wanted, proposed to build on that lot?
Yes.
And she said she wanted you to have egress onto Maple, since the driveway in the back between the house is a shared driveway, how do you plan to get cars into those garages in the back, if you put them in the back? Because that was one of the stipulations she had, she wanted you to have something come in and off of Maple, and because of you having a shared driveway in the back.
Well, there is an existing curb cut on Fifth Street, and at that point where the end, where the driveway starts, it's entirely on my lot. So all the way from where Katie is pointing there, there's, that's the property line. So that means that I have about five, I'm thinking meters here, I'm sorry, fifteen to twenty feet of paved area on my lot that's already there.
Yeah, but in the beginning, it's so narrow, so all these units are going to come in and out that same entrance, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And they're all going to have a carport in the back?
Excuse me?
Carport in the back of each unit.
Carport with two parking spaces, it looks like, he said tandem parking for two in the back of the, yeah.
Turning spaces there.
This house.
Good turning radius here.
They could have onto it.
I do like all the balconies that you have on these units, I think it's really cool to have those balconies.
Yes.
Porches.
The thing is that, yeah, so it's facing east and west, right? So especially towards the courtyard, it, it's nice to have a, a deck that faces the afternoon sun, afternoon sun, and it's lifted up one floor again for privacy.
You'd have the morning sun, the evening sun, the midday wouldn't be beating down so bad, really, going to be east and west for many parts. You've got the morning sun coming in to wake you up, and the evening sun to watch the sunset.
Right.
And you're not getting beat on by the afternoon sun.
No, the, the solar panels are going to be beaten up, and they will lose their energy for you.
Yep.
Now, again, this, I just wanted for, for clarification purposes, all five of these would be built at the same time, correct? This would be a single construction?
Yes.
It wouldn't be piecemeal?
No.
One added on to the other, this would be five opened at the same, basically the same time?
Right, I think it would have to be like that, since they are connected.
Just wanted to confirm that, because again, it would make a difference, I think, to the neighbors as well.
Yes.
Another thing, if you do them separate like that, it falls under a different building construction category, so you would have to start getting more spaces between each of the buildings that you built, but if you're building it all as one big unit at once, it gets around that.
It, it would be nice to have them all built at the same time, they all look alike. Like what happened to, down on First Street, when we approved that project, they were all going to be very similar in, in look and design, and. I know, Manistee is short of housing, they're very attractive, nice use of property.
I wish they'd been here fourteen years ago when I moved here.
Have you had a chance to talk to any of the neighbors, just to preliminarily feel them out? Now there's a lawyer on one end, and then the Dempsey across the street.
I have.
Because I, I live two blocks away from there, so.
No, earlier, I mean, we've been, we've been here for about five years now, and like I said, we worked with our neighbor who owns the, the three, three stalls of the garage.
Okay.
We worked with our neighbor to renovate that together, it's a joint project. I have good relations with all those neighbors, with the lawyer, the manor, Jim and Jan, but I have not presented these plans for them.
Okay.
Because they are new, and I wanted the planning commission to, and the zoning coordinator to, to get to look at them first.
No, I was just wondering if you just happened to him about building? We, I know, it's been, the lot's been empty for a long time, so, kind of got used to it being that, but we do need the housing, so.
Me too.
But it's not going to be easy. I, I, I can, I think it's fairer to say that there's going to be some neighbor opposition, only because the, we tried to have a, a building on the property that's going, eventually going to be vacated by the, the school system, at Jefferson School, and they, the proposal that was submitted was to build individual homes with a hundred square foot of frontage, and a minimum of a twelve hundred square foot home, individuals, you know, sell lots with, with specifications, and that was turned down. And then they ended up, they're in litigation right now with the school system, because the school system was trying to see if they could actually develop that property.
Well, with all due respect, that proposal you mentioned has never been published. There's never been a, a, an official proposal. The school system has always said that that area, that land should be green space.
That was, that was one of the options.
Well, and, and actually, it, it was originally, because they're going to, they were going to be using government money, in other words, the millage dollars, to tear down the building by law. You cannot build, you can't sell or develop the property that you tear down until the millage is paid. The proposal that came afterwards was from the Michigan Land Bank, which was going to pay for the demolition in order to develop the land. That was not, when, when they were, when they first made the proposal, that didn't exist, so they were looking at another alternative, but neither here nor there, it's just that there seemed to be some opposition to developing in that area.
Well, you got to remember, that is, right now, where school is, is a public entity-owned parcel, this is a private-owned parcel, that's a whole nother ball of wax.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't compare these to each other.
No, I'm, I'm only, I'm only concerned about, you know, how the neighbors may react.
Obviously, he's got good contact with the neighbor next door, because they both combined to renovate that garage, and that, that is a very positive step in the right direction, so he's got a good relationship there.
I know for a fact, I know the owners of that house. She recently passed, and her daughter owns the house, I spoke to her today, she has no knowledge of condos going there.
Well, these aren't.
He's always intended to build a home there, and with a shared driveway part of that coming in, and most people own two cars, so how many units times two, coming and going out of, out of that driveway? And like, when Denise talked to him years ago, she wanted him to come in and out of the Maple, now if he reversed this, you wouldn't have all that in the back with shared driveway, and you could enter and exit off the Maple with no problems.
These are more single-family homes than condos.
Yeah.
Well, still.
But you, you may have ten, you may have five cars, so, but I don't see a big deal in using that driveway.
And with, if I may, with this proposal, he is wanting to pursue a planned unit development, which would allow for the planning commission with justification to veer from some dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance if. which would allow for the planning commission with justification to veer from some dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance if justified. So that's why I also included the PUD section of the ordinance for you guys. Just keep that in your minds that, you know, the density obviously is veering from the ordinance. Parking could potentially veer from the ordinance. But if the planning commission feels that those items are justified through the standards that are provided in the zoning ordinance, you guys can, you know, reasonably waive those if they're reasonably justified.
Or require him to make a larger curb cut to exit onto the other street, so.
How much, do we know how much room? Marlene said there's not much room toward that other. The entrance appears to be entirely on his property, so.
It's a normal driveway.
It's a normal driveway.
So if the other neighbor, the one who's concerned about it, would they have the availability to add to the front part of that driveway? Yes.
Yeah, they could put in their own curb cut.
Could they add to that curb cut?
I would defer to Jeff McCool on that. The zoning ordinance says that you have to have a driveway at least three feet off your property line. But it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, I guess the curb cut wouldn't necessarily have to be three feet, the driveway itself. But Jeff makes the final decision on curb cuts and how wide they are and where they're located.
Typically, like planning would encourage shared driveway access to parcels. So like the fact that this one has one is not unheard of. We actually appreciate that. But if you don't feel it's wide enough, then we just ask them to encourage it.
I think if we make it wider, that tree's going to have to come down though.
Perhaps.
I've lived in units like this.
I think it's a fairly decent sized driveway. I walk it almost every day.
And I just read another updated True North study that says Northern Michigan still, even with all of the building that's going on a little bit north of here, still need over fifteen thousand units in Northern Michigan. And so this is only five, but five brand new units might attract more builders. We've got plenty of places that either need to be rehabbed and we've got lots of land. So I would love to see something like this go in.
And just generally remember that you guys are just, it's a general, do you support the project? I mean, don't get into the weeds too much on it.
Nope.
And honestly, I think that the curb cut on Fifth Street makes a lot more sense than trying to do it on Maple. Maple is a much busier street. And it's really not even a good street to park on at any given time, let alone having to try to get in and out of it. And especially for the next year while the bridge is out, goodness gracious, would be.
And Kennedy's being worked on and, yeah.
And when school goes in session, that's a busy road too.
I have a question. In between the units, where the stairs are, stairwells, your power electronics, whatever, how are you going to drain that? Because you have gable roofs coming off and it looks like a flat.
Yeah, you would drain that. You would have a very low slope roof on that, draining out to the edges. So that would catch the rain from the slope roofs and bring it out. Whether you do the scutters or, in this case, possibly do internal drains. So you have two drains on each unit with some kind of scupper or overflow. That's the way we usually do it.
Have you done any homes like this?
Not exactly like this, but I've done, I don't know how many homes during the years. And some of them have flat roofs, yeah. But a flat roof is not, you cannot do a hundred percent flat roof. Because it's not, that means that you have water pooling up there. So it's got to be a very low slope there. That's a good question. I mean, it's really important.
It doesn't take much of a slop to get water moving?
No.
No.
I don't know. Is there any more questions?
No.
I mean, what are your thoughts? I mean, we, there's no decisions made tonight, but, you know, is it good for the neighborhood?
I think it is.
Individual opinion.
I do like the concept. It adds housing to the city. It also would increase some of the stuff on tax base because there'll be a structure instead of a vacant land. And he's got a good starting point. There's stuff that can be tweaked yet.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a slam bam project. Things like this take time to develop and work your way through it. I think you're getting it starting in the right direction.
I have no problems at all with it. I think it would be good for the community. Hope that it doesn't get the backlash that other things have.
You always run into a.
You're going to get them all the time, no matter what we do.
Yeah. We know what to hear. Can't do anything.
I think that's, it will be a totally different story though. No, I like the idea. I mean, lot's been vacant for, what, eight, nine years now? I remember the house.
I think it was the year I moved here, fourteen years.
Yeah, okay, it's been a long time. We had not lived here long when that happened. And I hope that the neighbors like it.
And Maple has a lot of multifamily housing.
It does.
From both ends.
And vacation housing.
Yeah, just a little bit of tweaking on the arc, on the design on the outside, so it's not quite so plain.
It's almost like a shotgun construction is what it looks like.
Yeah, I like it to match. I have a problem with the gable on it, actually. It's just a little plain for me, but I like the idea. I actually like the back of it better than I like the front. But, yeah. We need it.
Shall we?
I really like the concept. And I like the hair that you took to mimic the architecture in town. I know these are preliminary drawings, but I'm with her on.
It just needs to look something.
Yeah, and I think that'll come. But overall, I really like the concept. I love the size of them. I think that's perfect. And there's a lot of room for growth for people in that price point, so, well done.
We need housing and they're attractive. And I agree with everything except using part of a shared driveway. You've got that many units. It should have its own driveway in for those units. And this can be widened or something. But as it is now, if you drive by there, one car can come through in the front for a little ways down and then it veers, you know, more. And that's a lot of traffic for a shared driveway. And that's my only complaint. Everything else I'm happy with.
I agree with everybody on the board. I love the concept. When you build them, please build them all together. Happy on First Street. Know they're okay. They were supposed to be different. I'm trying to be nice. But there was supposed to be a planned unit development. But, yeah, we wish you luck moving forward. And I know there's a lot of steps to go, but we look forward to seeing you again.
Do you have a preliminary timeline?
Not yet. I have, I'm retired now, I have patience.
You'll need it.
Thank you so much for letting me present this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very good. Full business, 141 Washington Street, special use permit extension request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Kevin Schaefer, to request an extension on the special use permit for 141 Washington. We have run into some delays, if I'm not mistaken. Our current permit expires at the end of the year. And if any of you have been by the building recently, you'll see that that's an unlikely timeframe to hit. Cost delays primarily. Bring out the best way to proceed, whether changing some plans or seeking some additional funding sources or incentives. But we feel like we're on a good track now. And after conversations with architecture in our contracting firm, we're hopeful that by the end of the year 2024, we can have a fully functional building.
Answers that question.
Yep, that was going to be my question.
Do you have any, I know the bottom half of the building is retail. Do you have discussions with?
That's currently the plan. We do not have any long-term tenant yet.
Are they ready to have tenants in them?
No, we haven't started construction or anything.
It's, again, housing for this area. I don't see any problem with this.
No. Honestly, I'm thrilled that you came back because I was afraid this was another attempt to try to resurrect the Hotel Northern that just kind of died. So, yeah, good on you.
Well, thank you. It's challenging, but I think we're going to get there.
We all hope and wait for the end of '24 to see it, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, is there a motion to extend?
I'll make that motion to extend.
Motion to extend by Mick, second by.
If you guys could define when you'd like to extend this to?
Okay.
Because, I mean, currently the zoning ordinance gives two years from expiration. I'm not sure what kind of timeframe you guys are looking at or what kind of extension you may have been expecting.
Or times better.
But yes, I would like to put a definitive timeframe on that.
When was this one supposed to?
This, January sixth of '24. January sixth of '24. You guys had originally given him two years. He's staying on top of things and getting, you know, the extension taken care of before we hit that January point. But if you guys could put a specified time on that, that would be ideal.
So that would be January 26th?
Yes, if the commission has wanted to do two years, January sixth of '26.
January 26th.
January 26th.
Second.
Shelley, any further discussion? None, please take a rule.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes. Approved, congratulations. Public comments, communications. Is there anyone in the audience that has any public comment? Please come to the podium. Name and address, and you have five minutes. Staff reports?
Did you say staff reports? Okay, I thought that's what you said, but then you didn't look up at me and give me like the look, so I was kind of waiting.
I wasn't giving you the look.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things for you guys. So you have your permit logs. We can go over those, let me know if you have any questions on them. I did have just a couple of brief updates. Okay, so I looked into, you guys had asked me about the 12th Street storage last month. I did make contact with the developer. They do still have some time on their special use permit. It was issued for a five-year approval. There were certain things that had to be completed within like ninety days or shorter amounts of time. But of the remaining items, they are within their special use permits still. And then I know that it's looking really like a construction zone around there still, but I think that they need some good rain to get that grass growing. Because they have finished grading, things are seeded for the most part, and we just need to get that to grow. So I don't know if it will be me personally doing a closeout inspection with him, but I did make that, you know, make it known to him that make sure to give the zoning administrator a call. When everything is complete, we'll make sure to get it closed out. I mentioned the trees to him again, you know, you're going to have to replant your trees. So, yes, he was very responsive, answered any questions I had. And I think we're all on the same page. So I followed up on that one. I also took a look at the tabernacle documents. To be honest, I didn't get a chance to go look at where they're at with construction, but they are also still under their permit until October of '23. So they have through the summer to get their work done. And I will make a trip over there.
I drove by there recently, they're really close.
They made a lot of progress.
It's completely paved over there. I mean, it's looking like they're going to be fine.
They're going to be good for October. Okay, good.
It looks like an IKEA store now.
Yeah.
And then, Pam, I think that you had asked me about a B&amp;B on Fifth and Pine. But is it the Dempsey?
No, it's not the Dempsey, it's the Chandelier House.
Okay, I might have to get with you and see, because I did a little cruiser on it and I couldn't tell and I couldn't find it on.
It doesn't have a sign on it, which is why, but she's got people staying there, which is why I was asking if she could.
I see, okay.
Was that Renee?
Renee, that's Renee.
Okay, well, yeah, we can talk more about that one. I don't think they have any, I didn't find any permit for a B&amp;B over there. So that's why I was like, oh, the Dempsey, you know, I couldn't really find it. But, yeah, we can talk more about it.
Advertising as the chandelier bed and breakfast. And I just haven't, there's no signage out there for her house. She just won the garden club's garden of the month.
Okay.
Which is nice and it looks great. She's done a lot of work there, but I just wanted to make sure.
That that's allowable.
That everything's okay.
Okay, yes, sounds good. I will look into that one a little bit further. And then I believe that was all of the updates that I had for you guys regarding questions on existing developments from last month. But we do have land use permits in your packet and business registrations, as well as signed permits and HGC permits. So if you guys have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them.
There's one land use permit, business registration, missing. It's the old Goody's Coffee Shop, or is it Trophies? That just come in in July?
There is someone in Goody's now?
They're working in there.
If it's another eating and drinking establishment, they wouldn't necessarily have to come through me for anything. But they would have to go to the city clerk for business registration. So I'll verify that they're still kind of doing the same thing there. I assume they're doing coffee and.
Coffee, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'll verify with Heather, though, that they got their business registration.
Trophies.
Trophies, okay.
Is there any update on the Milwaukee House or Scoobies?
No, I know that you could, all I know for Scoobies is the progress that, you know, that you can see. It looks like they're making moves. I'm not sure, though. I haven't heard anything from Marty on the Milwaukee House. I know that initially he said they're tied together in a sense that, you know, he wants to kind of get them both open around the same time. But I think that he's struggling, just like we here with everyone else with getting the contractors and, you know, making their timeline fit his.
Gone by, he's worked on the front. The garden side is, almost the gardens are almost complete at Scoobies. The Milwaukee House is almost, it could open, it could. He needs Scoobies in order to make the Milwaukee House.
I know he doesn't have the parking lot in the Milwaukee House, but the inside looks like it's pretty close.
Yeah, he proposed a parking lot over there as well.
By the road for, that they put in all the posts. All those steel posts they put out front area, what the heck they are.
That's, well, that's going to be the outside seating.
It looks pretty weird, right?
But that'll be the outside seating and then you're going to be driving around the backside. You're going to come in off of the back end and around and then exit over by the American leaning.
And that's going to be rough with that retaining wall they've got built in there. It looks like it'd be very difficult for the drive out to the north, despite the way that thing's laying there.
It comes out a decent amount past the retaining wall. And kind of hug, like it's closer to thirty, a little closer to thirty-one.
Marlene?
Have you ever applied for rental use on that house behind it? Because there's different people now living in it.
Yeah, I'll ask Heather about that too, if he's got a, or I guess it might be safe bill. I'll figure out.
That's going to be demoed.
Yeah, I thought they were.
There's people in it now.
Those are probably his employees. Those are probably his employees.
I don't know.
He is not currently proposing to demo the dwelling on the property.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's what he said.
It's still shown on his plans.
The one just up. Last I heard, he was gonna demo that.
There's a little house that Marty owns too on Lake Street, across from the parking lot. It's things that is halfway done.
Trump's old house.
Yeah, that one is. The siding's not done on it. It's just, it needs just some finishing work.
I know he's got a duplex that he had under permit. I don't know if it's on, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think it's the one on Lake Street.
He's got a little place on Lake Street.
But he's worked on it for quite a while.
It's been a long time, and it's not finished, so.
Okay, yeah, that one I don't think I've issued any permits for. I, I think he's just done stuff, you know, hasn't expanded anything that wouldn't require land use over there. At least that's what I would assume, but.
Well, I mean, he started working on it.
Yeah.
It's like half, half single, and it just needs to be finished up a little bit.
Not today's, maybe tomorrow's.
I don't know.
But I know he has a chef.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
Oh, we wish him well. You'll have some more restaurants in town. Okay. Long meetings, training, attended by?
Hold on, we're not done.
I'm sorry, I still had a couple. Mike wanted to give you guys a brief update, and I did forget about the weekly updates from the city manager to pull a couple of things for you guys. You're good, you're good. So just a couple of highlights. The county received almost half a million dollars from the Federal Rail Administration for a grant. You guys probably saw that in the paper. So that will push forward more feasibility studies for that rail relocation. Very initial still, but half a million dollars is a great chunk to really keep moving the project forward. So we'll see where that takes us. And then, let's see. The Gateway, um, they were talking about removing the fencing the last week of June. So I'm not sure if that's happened yet, but they really were trying to get the grass. Okay, I was out of town from Fourth of July, so I haven't done my cruises around town yet. But yeah, so that's good that the fencing was removed. I know they haven't approved, they just got an approved land use permit to do food trucks on the north side of the development. So I think they just have a couple right now. But that will be a good kind of in-between before they truly break ground, a good use of that property, I think. The community development director and building official positions were posted on the city website. We saw they're on maps as well, so that's good. The Michigan Association of Planning. Applications are due for both of those positions by 7/21. And SafeBill is done on July 23rd, or no, I'm sorry, not July 23rd.
August.
September, is that August? Yeah. August 23rd. Let's see. The Harbor Drive Water Main Loop is set to start construction on July 14th. So that's exciting infrastructure to be done. I don't know how much you guys have paid attention to or seen the utility pole on Quincy.
Yeah.
That was removed this week. I know that is a hot topic for people who live on that road.
Beams across the nation.
Yes.
Like the Eiffel Tower.
And then the Gateway is anticipating coming before you all for a PUD request in August. So I had a preliminary meeting with them. I have not officially received the application, which we're gonna be cutting it close. But I will, you know, get that review done. And I anticipate them submitting probably tomorrow. I'm gonna give them a call if they're not submitting tomorrow, to get them on the agenda for you guys in August. So that will be coming down the pipeline. And that's all I had for staff.
And I'm gonna just chime in a little bit. We are officially done with the city under contract on September 30th. You guys are, obviously have not hired up another position yet. I imagine that Nancy will resign from her, her position as recording secretary. And a transition plan hasn't really been discussed yet as well. So if you guys have a hard time filling the position, which I hear is difficult in the region, we have not had discussions with the city about any kind of transition. So if September 30th does come, you guys might be on your own. So like, just a heads up. And hopefully we fill that position quickly. So I wish them the best of luck, whoever they are. But those are not discussions that we really truly had yet. And as it creeps closer and closer, especially with our workloads that we have on the other portions of our jobs, you know, it is, it is concerning that we're having also special use permits for major projects come in a month before we're really done. So you might, we might, you know, have to figure something out to finish that, at least get it across, especially if you guys table it. And then we also, I think you have scheduled time off around that time as well. I did wanna come here and just kinda put that in your guys' ear that, hey, we are rapidly approaching that timeframe. I think we're two and a half months out. We won't probably talk to you guys until, you know, next month. And then after that, we'll be looking at submittals for a Gateway project accordingly. And then we might have one more meeting after that. So it's something to keep in mind. We will not leave you hanging in the aspect of we will at least put together the October packet. And then hopefully we, we have somebody in place that can, that can pick it up, so. And I just wanted to remind you guys of that, so.
Buzzkill.
Appreciate that, Mike.
Yeah, you're supposed to give one more really good update at the end of something like that.
Oh, yeah. We also, I forgot. Thank you.
Yes.
It's the bad news, good news thing, or sandwich, a good, you know, good news, bad news, good news. So we also will be presenting you guys at least like a last like five years, like what we've done for you guys in the city. And then we'll probably be taking that on the city council, or at least requesting so, that we can show you guys, you know, the growth the city's seen in our tenure. And then kinda, you know, hey, you know, best wishes to the person that takes over, so.
Yeah. So are you gonna be that far away that we can't?
They won't have a contrive.
They'll still be in that building.
You can come say hi.
You can, you can come say hi. Yeah.
Might be at the American Legion, but.
Yeah, I, we had a great pork roast. A lot of free food. I seen Marlene there. Mick was there. It was great. So, yeah, that was awesome.
There were no leftovers?
No, actually, we, we planned really, really well. I think we served over 300 people. And we, we literally ran out on the last person. We might have given them a lot to get rid of.
Great music, great food, and everything went so well. It was really well put together.
Well, thank you for that.
Yes, that's all we have for you guys.
All right. Meetings, training, I think I said this already, but I'll repeat it. Meeting, meetings, training, attended by members.
You can just kinda go through if anyone's attended a meeting or training relevant to the commission in the past month. I will document that and keep the tracker, I've been updating, I mean, we've only been doing this for a month. Keeping the tracker up to date in real time to turn over to RRC at the end of the year. So it's okay if you didn't go to anything, but it's just to, you know, monthly that we can track it. Instead of, what did you do the past 12 months at the end of the year when I had to do for?
You guys are like, uh.
Anybody done anything this past month? Nick, I, you?
Not this month, no.
Okay. Bob, I know Bob has.
So it's been fire related.
Okay.
I've been buried in that, between that and survey related files.
Marlene, anything?
No.
Shelley? Okay, same here. Look at it next month. Member discussion, anything? Bob?
I think everybody had a pretty good time on the Fourth. Nice to see the tabernacle, what progress was made. Other than that, I think we're getting some people that get some good ideas coming in. It's just, I realize the contractor problem is a big thing yet, because I'm dealing with that in my line of work. And we're getting swamped. And just, we get, none of these places have people to be able to do these jobs. They're just, everything's coming so much that contractors, I know, I'm behind the stuff. Spicer's behind the stuff. All the engineering companies are behind. So also with that, the contractors are behind. We just have to wade through it and hope for the best.
Nick? Nope, nothing for the group? Pam?
I'm just really kinda bummed about the, your guys' contract. If I don't get a chance to say it, I've really enjoyed working with you guys.
It's not done yet.
I hope something changes, but I was really glad to see the fence come down around. It really did improve the look of, of River Street for the Fourth of July weekend.
And moving those other things back against the walls.
Yeah.
Builds up a little bit.
Looks a whole lot better. We, my husband and I had a good Fourth of July weekend. I thought the fireworks were fantastic.
There were good things I didn't see.
Marlene?
I think, I think everything's been moving along with the building and stuff. And I was happy to see the fences come down. But with the shortage of parking, and they're not going to rebuild anything in there for at least another year, couldn't people park in those areas?
I think there's a little bit more that goes into that engineer-wise, and they have brownfield. And I know it's just cars being parked. But I think that on, you know, on the surface, it seems like a really good idea. And I think that that's something that they would try to implement if they could. But I don't know that there's a way to implement some kind of like, even like a temporary parking, without them really having to construct like some kind of parking lot too. Because that would be a little bit outside of the zoning ordinance as well. So I think, you know, it's something I'm sure that they've considered, but I think it's just a little too much for what they're wanting to do. I know T had said that they're wanting to break ground in a year, you know, once they get their approval, so.
Yeah, there's also a lot of liability that goes into something like that as well. Like where, you know, they'd have to carry additional insurance. And then the, it's still, I mean, it's a vacant lot, but it's still a construction site, so I mean, I, I just.
Doing trips if it's not.
Yeah, they would, they would assume that.
Right.
Falls through to the old basement?
Turn the buildings down, put fill in, it's nowhere near the correct.
But there must have been 50 or 60 cars parked there on the Fourth of July.
Oh, really?
I can't speak to that, Mick. I wasn't working.
There was no cars in that park.
After, after, oh, no, after the parade?
There wasn't any there when I, when I went through.
Well, you wonder if they had permission, or if one just assumed and then the rest said, oh, it looks like a parking lot over here.
Well, they told me the last question was, there was a lot of cars parked there.
Yeah.
I don't have anything. Thank you all.
The only thing I have in this is continuation. The so-called auto shop on Fifth and Ramsdale. I know, you know, he was, he approached us two years ago, maybe three. He was supposed to have no more than four cars, I believe, in that lot. Now there was seven the other day. Don't look in runnable condition, so.
There are not people parking for the bar?
No, if they're not in runnable.
And that was, was that a special use permit?
No, we never, it was, nothing was ever granted. He was going to canvass the neighborhood. See if, if indeed people would welcome that again, an auto shop in that area.
I think it was Alex Gil.
Nothing's ever happened.
He never came back.
He was what? Alex Gil, I think.
Alex Gil.
Yeah, it is.
It really looks bad for, bad for the area, so.
I don't believe he's got a permit, is what they're saying.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into that one. Thank you.
Other than that, I do not have anything else. Hard to believe. But I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, okay. It's 8:24, adjourned.